Thank you, take seat. The item of public comments. First person on the agenda, Mr. Aziz Shaari.
This is my first time, so I dress the mic and I face you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. You can please have your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Aziz Shaari. My address is 1321 Pecan, McAllen. Thank you for allowing me to come to this meeting. I know several of the commissioners here. I don't see my city commissioner for District One. Is he on vacation?
He had some previous engagements.
We're talking about Mr. Hadad? Okay. All right, so let me just introduce myself again. My family has been in McAllen since 1926. Our parents immigrated here from Lebanon and Mexico, and they purchased property on Seventeenth Street in 1926. So the buildings that have been there and have been passed on to our family have been there almost 100 years. In 2009, after the retail business in Seventeenth Street went south, we had a meeting with the mayor, I believe it was Mr. Cortez, before that Leo Montalvo, and they wanted to turn McAllen, downtown McAllen, into a historical district. And we were all for it. Because the city of McAllen wanted to build the downtown area into a vibrant center to where people can go and enjoy themselves. There were restaurants there, and they were what they called cantinas. And cantinas, of course, if you remember, those were bars. And we wanted to clean that up. So the McAllen Commission put together this historical preservation plan. And they spent a lot of money. Y'all spent a lot of money, by the way, and you all were working for the city. But I remember meeting with the mayor, meeting with the city commissioners. And this was a proposal, this is over a couple of hundred pages. They wanted to rebuild the downtown Seventeenth Street into a historical district. Because of the history behind McAllen. Of course, the Sineal Ray is there, the Rex Cafe is there, and other businesses that have been there since the 1920s, 1930s is still there. And so my question is to the city of McAllen, what happened to the plans that you all had for the historical district? Did you all scrap it? Did you let it go? I understand that there was grant money, and there was grant money that was given to businesses. And several of the tenants that we rented to were applying for those grants, and they got grant money to rebuild the buildings. And then a year later... Does that mean I'm up? No? Or is that something? Okay, so let me just continue. So what is happening to the city of McAllen's proposal to turn Seventeenth Street into a historical district? Never mind all of the stuff that's going on right now. The city of McAllen was supposed to build... They were supposed to have a substation for the police department there.
They had it.
What happened to it? They were also supposed to put lighting. What happened to it? They were also supposed to put cameras. What happened to it? They were supposed to have enough police there, not on bicycles, but enough force to keep the city of McAllen clean and avoiding crime. What happened to that? It all disappeared. So my first question is, what happens? What happened to the plans that the city of McAllen had to build the historical district? And to turn that into an entertainment center? That's my number one question. You don't have to answer it right now. Because what I'm planning on doing is that if we don't have a meeting between the city, the landlords, the tenants, then we're not going to have an entertainment district. It's going to go somewhere else. We need to meet, we need to come together, we need to make a decision to where either we decide we're going to build the city of McAllen's historical district and turn it into an entertainment center where people can come of all ages. Not just the 21-year-olds who want to go drink. We're talking about what do we want to do? The second question I have is, are you going to continue this or are you going to let it go? I need to know the people who own property down there, because we depend on tenants to pay the rent. When the rent is paid, we pay our taxes. And then they hire employees, and those employees have families. And those families depend on their job. If you're going to close down Seventeenth Street, or you're trying to create ordinances that upset... Anyway, what are we wanting to do? If you want to build the historical district like you planned in 2009, this document here says that you all were planning to make money, to have money and get grants. The second year, you all stopped the grant funding. The police never showed up, the substation... I don't know what happened. We don't know what happened. So if we're going to work together as residents of McAllen who own property here, and we're going to work with the city, we need to meet. We need to have a plan. A plan is the only way that we can go forward. If we don't have a plan, and all we're doing right now is citations, 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 and all you're doing is fining them, and how does that make them feel? They don't want to be in business. Is that the plan? Is that what we're trying to do? So my last question was, what are your plans to do down on Seventeenth Street? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Shaari.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And thank you for the birthday wish.
Happy birthday. Yes, sir. Thank you. Now we have Mr. Manuel Pescador. Manuel Pescador. Okay. That'll be closing our public comments. We're going to go to proclamations. McAllen Public Library Month by Commissioner Aguirre.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Kate. Hey, you brought it in. Great group of people here. The proclamation today is the state of Texas, County of Hidalgo, and the city of McAllen. Whereas the McAllen Public Library is a cornerstone of education, imagination, and opportunity. Offering everything from early literacy programs to digital resources that support lifelong learning and personal growth. And whereas the McAllen Public Library welcomes all people serving as an inclusive and accessible community hub that connects residents across cultures, generations, and experiences. And whereas the library curates collections and develops programs that reflect the diversity of McAllen, ensuring equitable access of information, technology, and culture for all. And whereas the library helps individuals navigate life's challenges by providing trusted information, digital access, job search opportunities, and connections to essential services. It also contributes to the strength of the local economy by equipping job seekers, entrepreneurs, students, and creators with the tools and training to succeed. And whereas in times of both crisis and calm, the McAllen Public Library and its staff remain committed to supporting and strengthening the community. And whereas the McAllen Public Library card opens doors of endless possibilities from books and technology to lifelong learning and imagination. Therefore, I, Tony Aguirre Jr., City Commissioner for the city of McAllen, by virtue of my authority vested to me by the mayor and our city commissioners, do proclaim today, or this month of September, McAllen Public Library Month. Kate, everyone loves Kate. And all of McAllen Library. McAllen Library, there's just not... This is a building that was created years ago by the donation of the Walmart Foundation. And it serves as the largest library in this whole area. And she's going to tell us the story of what the McAllen Library does for this community.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you for the proclamation. I want to introduce our library advisory board president, Dr. Joseph K. Ryan, and our secretary, Dr. Avarek. And Laura McClish is here as our board member also. And we also have Marty the Library Cat. Dr. Ryan, would you like to join me? So September marks National Library Card Sign Out Month. Oh, first of all, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Twill, sorry about that. September marks National Library Card Sign Out Month, a time to celebrate one of the most powerful tools a community can have: a library card.
And today, Marty the Library Cat and I would like to focus on something simple yet transformative: a free library card. With it, you have lifelong learning from eBooks and audiobooks to online databases and homework help for students of all ages. Equal access, making sure everyone, regardless of income, age, or background, has entry to resources that inform, inspire, and empower.
The McAllen Public Library continues to evolve to meet modern needs, to bridge digital divides, and to open doors for everyone: young families seeking early literacy support, job seekers building resumes, seniors exploring new pursuits, and lifelong learners hungry for discovery. So here's what you can do for National Library Card Sign Out Month. First of all, encourage every resident, your family, your friends, from schoolchildren to retirees, to sign up for a free library card. It will take you around the world and everywhere. Support outreach efforts and come to our McAllen Public Library events and...
And champion our library. Because when you support the library, you're investing in the future. Check it out.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go, the next proclamation, which is going to be Constitution Week. Well, we have a very special proclamation. This is a proclamation for the most important document in our nation. So we read proclamation, the state of Texas, County of Hidalgo, city of McAllen. Whereas the United States Constitution is the oldest and shortest written constitution of any government in the world. It contains only 4,543 words, including the signature, and takes about half an hour to read it. It was drafted in less than 100 working days. And whereas the United States Constitution, America's most important document, stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout its history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. And whereas Constitution Week is celebrated annually during the week of September 17th to the 23rd to commemorate its history, importance, and bring attention to how it served still today. And whereas the Constitution Week is celebrated in the week of September 17th and the 23rd. And whereas this celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution, DAR, in 1955. DAR petitioned Congress to... 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the US Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956 by President Dwight Eisenhower. And whereas the DAR also created a structure that is built in tribute to the Constitution of the United States. DAR Constitution Hall, which is Performing Arts Center, opened in 1929. And whereas the aims of the Constitution Week celebration are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution, inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life, and to encourage the study of the historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. And whereas Constitution Week is a great time to learn more about this important document and celebrate the freedom it gave us. Now therefore, I, Pepe Cabeza de Vaca, City Commissioner of the city of McAllen, Texas, by the virtue of authority vested in me, and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, hereby proclaim September 17th to the 23rd of 2025 as Constitution Week. Congratulations, ladies. Thank you.
I think you said it all. Thank you so much. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. My name is Mara Lee Moats, and I'm the First Vice Regent with the Rio Grande Chapter DAR. And with me today is our Regent, Dottie Fabian, and our corresponding secretary, Jennifer Sander. Also, our member Ms. Nelson, Ms. Carolyn Nelson. And our State Vice Regent is with us today, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Paula Owen. And I'm so proud that they are here with us. Thank you so much for wanting to learn about Constitution Week. It was the DAR who did go to President Eisenhower. Our past President General, Ms. Caraway, started the proclamation that lets us all celebrate Constitution Week 70 years later now. So please, ask your children about Constitution Week, because September 17th through the 23rd, they'll be learning about it. Thank you so much.
I have some cups for you guys.
Oh, thank you.
You guys want to join?
Sure.
You don't. You don't say no. So we open the public hearings. There'll be items 1A, 1A1, 2, 3, 4, and 1A4, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L. Thank you, Mr. Omar.
Commissioner, good afternoon. Okay, so items, one is...
Before you jump into that, I just wanted to point out for the commission that we tried to reorganize the public hearing agenda for you. So you will now see as we bring you the city-initiated rezonings. Those will always be grouped under their own subheadings, so you know exactly what those are. On this particular agenda, they all fall under number four.
Right.
All right, perfect. So item number one is located at 2601 North Ware Road. They are amending the original PUDF at Harvest Cove Phase 2. This one is on the west side of... Sorry, it's on North Ware Road, on the west side of Ware Road, and it's north of Vine Avenue. We did receive a letter from a neighbor just in concerns that one of her sprinkler heads had gotten broken, but the contractor fixed it, so that was the only item that was pending. Item number two and three are annexation and initial rezoning to R1. This is for 36 acres at 6,000 South Jackson Road. This is South Jackson, just north of Wayland. This is for a proposed Blue Jay subdivision. It's a R1. Item number 4A is a customer-initiated rezoning at 1019 East Cedar. It's from R3A to R3. This is for townhomes. And then, of course, items B through L are city-initiated rezonings. They were all approved at the PNZ meeting of August 19th.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Is there anyone against any of these items? Anyone against any of these items? With the pleasure of the commission? Motion by Mr. Aguirre, second by Mr. Castillo. Everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose him, sign. Motion carries. Item 1B.
Okay, this property is located at 1016 North 20th, just south of Kendallwood Avenue. The customer is requesting a rezone of the property to R2.
You have to disapprove, right?
Correct. PNZ disapproved it.
So it needs a supermajority?
Yes, sir.
Case.
We move to approve.
I'll move to approve the recommendation from the planning and zoning.
Okay, so it's to disapproval of the rezoning request?
Disapproval.
Disapproval.
Disapproved.
We disapproved.
I'll go with whatever the board recommends.
Okay, so I have a motion, a motion by Mr. Rios to disapprove, second by Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Okay. To approve what the recommendation of disapproval from the planning and zoning.
It's going to be to disapprove the rezoning. Everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose him, sign. Motion carries. Item C, conditional use permits?
Item C1 is located at 400 Alana. It's for Suites N1 and N2. This is a conditional use permit for Suerte Bar. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of August 19th, the board voted disapproval with favorable recommendation. It does not meet the distance requirement for the residential zone on the north side.
All right. Is anyone here opposing the proposed CUP for this bar? For Suerte? With the pleasure of the city commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Aguirre? Second. Second by Mr. Rios. Everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose him, sign. Motion carries. C2.
Okay, so C2 is also located at 400 Alana. This is for Suite K. This is also a conditional use permit for a bar and grill at Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of August 19th. The board voted disapproval with favorable recommendation.
With a favorable recommendation.
Removed.
Anyone, let me... Anyone opposing the proposed CUP for this location? I have a motion by Mr. Aguirre?
Is there a second?
Second by Mr. Rios. Everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose him, sign. Motion carries to approve C3.
Okay, this is located at 3116 Ash Avenue. The customer is renewing the conditional use permit for a drive-in theater and a mini golf. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the board voted disapproval with a favorable recommendation. It's just because of the distance requirement on the north side.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone opposing the proposed CUP for this location? Can I have a motion? Have a motion by Mr. Aguirre to approve? Second by Mr. Castillo. Everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose him, sign. Motion carries. Number four.
Item number four is Matty's Pumpkin Patch. This is located at 6712 North Benson. The customers are proposing to continue to run the picture venue and event center. In October 2024, the establishment was in operation and was cited four different occasions: three for operating without a conditional use permit, and one for construction without a permit. They applied for a building permit, and they are still pending structural engineer design for the structures since they had modifications. They will also need to comply with a subdivision process. The neighborhood did submit a petition in opposition, but it got 17.68%. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of August 19th, the board voted disapproval with a favorable recommendation.
Is that 17... triggers a supermajority or not?
It does not.
No.
Just run, I'll do a little check.
It does not.
Okay, is anyone here opposing the proposed CUP for this location?
Yes, sir.
So just to be clear, Mr. City Attorney, there is no supermajority requirement on this item?
That is correct.
Yeah. Can I have your name and address?
Yes, sir. My name is Leo Chao. Address is 6700 North Benson Road, McAllen, Texas.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I've been here probably four or five times in the past five years, always opposing to Matty's Pumpkin Patch. One of the reasons was because it is zoned all R1, and everything around is R1. They are operating under a C3 business. The property isn't developed, the property isn't subdivided. The property does not comply with city code, like Mr. Salto said, that barns were built, and another porch was built as well. Does not comply with proper parking, making it dusty all around. It doesn't require, does not have the proper fencing or the buffer around the property. Aside from the zoning requirements added, aside from the zoning requirements, but most like Mr. Salto said, last year they operated without a CUP. They were cited several times. The city of McAllen actually filed a lawsuit so they could stop operating. That's when they stopped operating. But despite all this wrongdoing, I feel like you will still grant them the CUP. I'm not in favor of that. But I do ask for the commission and my neighbors to please, if you guys do find your ways of saying approving it, please take in consideration your neighbors. I do ask, maybe just give it a permit from 10 to 6 instead of operating naude, so the neighbors could enjoy their property as well. And do remember that it is a pumpkin patch picture. So I don't think it's necessary to be all year. Maybe just October and November, and then from there operate every year. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Anyone else opposing the proposed CUP? Is the applicant here? Thank you. Just tell your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jaime Morales. I'm the attorney for Mr. Vega, Ms. Martinez, also on behalf of Matty's Pumpkin Patch. So I've also been here, I've gotten to know several of you, and we've presented to the commission on various times. I guess one of the things that we wanted to clarify as far as construction, the construction of the barn actually took place back in 2016. And I think we had provided some photos to Commissioners Amora. He had been talking to me about some of these issues. The construction had already taken place. It was applied for after the fact because he didn't know he needed one. So when he found out he was in violation of that, that's when he presented or submitted the application for the building permit in that situation. I think some of you who have been here longer also know that we've had to meet the requirement of a supermajority several times because there had been opposition by other members from other neighbors. Mr. Vega and his wife have been talking to some of the other neighbors, trying to see what they can do as far as parking, operation, time periods, to make it more... to work with them. And I think they've had some success doing that because we do not have the same level of opposition that we've had in the past. As far as the laws... the same level of opposition that we've had in the past. As far as the lawsuit, I mean, one of the situations was that we were required to go request a C U P. This has been ongoing. I believe they did special events permits for a number of years. I think even this last one, they were trying to do a mass gathering permit. However, the C U P is seems to be the way that that the the commission or the city is requesting that they go. So they've already started that process. They have an engineering. They're working with Quintanilla Engineering in order to get that process done. My clients are willing to work with their neighbors as well and with the city regarding time periods. Initially, there was never a plan to be open year round. However, since it was required to get a C U P and the C U P typically applies year round, that's why they went that route. However, typically, it's a fall, a fall event. It's hot, as we all know. So a lot of times, people do not like to be outside. There's only certain times of the year that it this is really feasible. And we're approaching that time period right now. We've been here before this time. There was only two bars and there's at least another business besides a bar that was trying to get approved. I mean, this is what kind of makes the Matty's Pumpkin Patch stand out from some of the other businesses and the other well, the other types of businesses that seek approval here in McAllen. And I think that's why it's always been a difficult situation because the city is trying to achieve a balance between what trying to provide activities for the family, but also balancing with the neighbors. So we're asking the commission to approve a C U P. My clients are willing to meet whatever requirements are imposed in order to allow them to remain operational for this fall season. And then, again, it would be something where we would have to come back. We met the requirements before about the fencing, parking typically we did need a variance and we that my clients have already agreed to reduce the amount of parking with some of the other neighbors. And we're just trying to see how we can move forward with this.
Thank you. Any questions?
What was the percentage of the opposing?
Seventeen.
Okay, I'm trying to understand. You mentioned you said a few, a lot of things. But I think I caught that you said that because of the McAllen granting a C U P, that is why you're operating more months than what you would like to do?
Well, I guess.
I don't understand that.
No problem. I guess the season is shorter. I think initially, some of the special events permits that were granted and applied for were typically from September through December. The C U P and part of it was, well, it was typically a year long application as opposed to what had been applied for before. The city is allowed to put in certain restrictions if they so choose the city council as far as hours and the time period that C U P is granted.
Okay, so if you're operating, you prefer to operate between September and October and December? Is that what you're saying?
That that is. Yes.
So why I'm trying to understand I that.
Yeah, there there's no operational requirement that they have to open for the for the year long duration. The C U P is granted for a year. Commission could grant it for six months if they wanted to.
Well, if we could grant it for for the neighborhood for it to try. We've been exactly up in here for five years. Okay, and I've I've been here for those five years that you've been here. And somehow, some way, we we still have some opposition. And some people, like you say, they don't like to voice themselves, but they're they're opposed to it. Okay. And so if we make it a September to December, at least, at least that would be, I mean, you would allow the neighborhood to, you know, be free of the excess traffic that that goes there. And, and, you know, the success of of your of your business is important. It is nice. I mean, I have grandkids and we've gone there. But I also see that at times, you know, there is a burden to the to the to the area, which is vastly residential. So if we could maybe work with with an operation of September to to December, I would.
In a certain certain hour as well? Because they were talking about.
Well, what time do you normally close?
Believe in the application, it was from ten to seven.
From what?
Sorry. My apologies. This is Ms. Martinez. She's one of the owners of the property.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Melinda Martinez. My address is sixty seven twelve Benson Road in there in McAllen. That's our address. The times that I that we're looking at are from ten AM to sunset hours. It usually changes because there's a fall change of hours, fall back or spring forward. So it's usually seven or eight. So usually, there's only lighting in the front areas and the pumpkin patch is just during the day. So during the times of seven, seven thirty, eight o'clock, everybody's already pushing themselves out because there's really no more lighting and the pictures aren't very good. I appreciate the the time that you guys have given us. It is a seasonal pumpkin patch. Families are go there. They they create memories. You have kids running around. It is a fun little pumpkin patch.
So so, I mean, the neighborhood, September to December to sunset? I'd like to make that motion.
Commissioner, can we just clarify that that's just for this year and that they would need to come back next year?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a one it's a one year kind of thing.
Yeah, every year we have to come in.
Six month, six month.
We've tried to to negotiate with our.
Well, and you possibly could if we if 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 the neighborhood and everyone worked together.
Yeah, let's just keep in mind that the neighborhood that we're looking at, there's an empty field next to us, and then there's Mr. Chow next to us. But then there's goats next to that property. It's it's all farm area in that area. We're trying our best to come to an agreement with them. So we would have to so we can continue.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Aguirre to to grant this permit from September to December from ten AM to eight PM with the other conditions noted. Right?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rios. Everybody in favor, please send a five, say an aye.
Aye.
And oppose them sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
D, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of McAllen?
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Aguirre? Second by Mr. Castillo. Everybody in favor, please send a five, say an aye.
Aye.
And oppose them sign. Motion carries. We have a public hearing on the city of McAllen proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, sir.
Commissioner, Commissioner, thank you. I just want to give a brief recap for the community. The commission held four workshops to discuss the budget with my office. I appreciate the commission's time and diligence in working with us. The the budget for the city of McAllen this year proposes to decrease the tax rate from forty four ninety nine per hundred to forty four eighty nine per hundred. The budget carries with it total appropriations of five hundred and sixty nine million dollars. Recommended COLA for employees of three percent in accordance with the compensation study that was presented to the commission. General Fund appropriations are a hundred and sixty one million, general fund balance of a hundred and two point four million with two hundred and thirty eight days of working capital. The budget also includes four new positions in the general fund and sanitation fund carries one new full time position. The budget, as I mentioned, has total appropriations of five hundred and sixty nine million dollars, twenty eight point three million dollars of debt service, three hundred and twenty nine point two million dollars to fund operations, two hundred and eleven point five million dollars for capital outlay and large projects. Of those projects, the top ten capital outlay projects include the North Water Treatment Plant expansion at twenty point nine million dollars, airport terminal improvements of sixteen point six million dollars, reservoir development of sixteen million dollars, airport runway and taxiway safety improvements of twelve point seven million dollars. We're getting close to finishing up the major expansion at Quinta Mazatlan in the Center for Urban Ecology. We have nine point three million dollars left budgeted to that project. Wastewater large sewer improvements of seven point three million dollars, drainage fee improvements to the McAllen lateral channel at six point seven million dollars. In sanitation, recycling center upgrade, which will automate our processes at the at the recycling center at five point two million dollars. Tres Lagos reclaimed water elevated tower construction at four point five million dollars. And we are nearing completion of implementation of our ERP and have budgeted towards that project three point eight million dollars. Again, four new positions allocated, full time positions allocated to the general fund, those being in the building permits and inspections department for a building inspector, a plans examiner, a permit technician, and in sanitation, a maintenance worker for drainage. That is very important in maintaining the inlets and outflows from the drainage canals. And the three employees in the building inspections department should help move the workflow in that department as well. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments from the commission and would remind that this is a public hearing. And so if there are questions from the public or comments from the public, now would be the time for us to hear those.
There will be a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. It's the proposed city of McAllen budget and is required by state law. So any members of the public have any input, questions about this budget? Commissioners?
Many of the expenditures that that our city manager expressed have a lot of revenues coming in to pay for these these expenditures. And we're we have a very, very healthy fund balance. We should be very, very proud of of all of our departments, our staff and our administration that work diligently to make sure that we we don't get in trouble whether in in times like this where, you know, we're facing, we're facing, you know, situations with how much, how much revenues are we expecting in sales tax when Mexico can come or leave or stay or come come? You know, we've got the the major fourth quarter holiday season, and we hope that and pray that we we have a good one. But we have to budget in a manner in which we are, we are, you know, confident that that we won't get ourselves into trouble. But there are needs that this community is asking for, you know, whether it's safety, public safety, and our police and fire departments are funded well, negotiated very well, always, always having safety on their part for it for them to be safe in in taking care of us and for also the safety of our of our residents and constituents. We also have to remind ourselves that whether we are at a hundred and fifty five thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand living in this in in our in our community, we have between twenty five to thirty percent more come every single day, whether they come for employment, whether they come for tourists, buy, sell. So, you know, we really have to plan for a hundred and ninety to two hundred thousand people at one time in the middle of us in the middle of the day. So but with that, they bring revenues, they bring their buying here, they're spending their monies here. And and we're trying to create that that atmosphere in which our local residents that are our ad valorem tax base gets their support and and gets what what they need to to live because you choose to live in this community. And so we are looking at various other things that we want to do to improve the quality of life so that we can continue to grow and continue for others to want to come and choose to be with us. We we might have met only four times, but believe me, there was large, large studies done amongst to prepare ourselves. And I will say that that I I want to I want to commend you and all of us do.
All the staff.
Commend you because it was very organized. It was easy to go through with some difficult decisions, some difficult decisions that we had to make. We'd love to, we we have to look at the wants, the needs, and and in so sometimes things have to go to the future, and sometimes we have to take immediate action. So we adjusted some of those things. We also wanted to tell our 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 city employees, which were a thousand eight hundred of us strong, and and, you know, that we're here and we acknowledge that there is cost of livings, demands, and also for our ad valorem taxes, that we didn't go up. We actually went slightly down in our percentage rate, and we're still growing. I I say that there's a few of us that are not here today for various reasons, and two of them are serving us in another capacity in 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 other ventures. But they're serving you and serving us this 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 board that are not here. This is a very active and working working board. I I just want to say that, yes, you know, today you have an opportunity to say things, but we have till the end of the month, October first is the is when we go to our next year's budget. We can approve something today, but we are we you are our eyes and ears, and we want you all to feel feel comfortable addressing it to your your commissioners or directly to city city staff.
Yeah, definitely, Commissioner. I agree with you. It's been a a long process. I commend Mr. Tabuel and the city of McAllen staff. Thank you for all the all the time and effort that you guys have put into this budget. Guys, every department, you know, telling us what are the needs for your departments to work properly and to serve our citizens in the best of our capacity. So thank you so much for for everything. This budget is it's in the is gonna take a is gonna get approved in the final form in September twenty second?
Next meeting. That's right.
Next meeting. So it is actually in our website. So any of you guys can go and and check it out in in the website. And and like Commissioner Aguirre said, is we we work hard for for you guys to have a better quality of life, you know, either if you live in McAllen or if you visit McAllen for whatever reason, either work or play. So thank you for to everybody. And thank you, Ike.
Yeah, with with pleasure, Commissioner. I do want to acknowledge Angie Rodriguez sitting over there, smiling in the back of the room. If it wasn't for her, we wouldn't have gotten through this process as easily as we did. She is incredible with the assistance she provided us in preparing the budget. Commissioner, there is no action today. This is just a public hearing for feedback from the community. So if there is none, at your leisure, we can move on.
Okay, thank you. So this is going to end the public hearing, and we go into consent agenda. Item two A.
H four.
Two H.
Yes, sir.
Can I have a motion, please? I have a motion by Mr. Castillo to approve. Second by Mr. Aguirre. Everybody in favor, please send a five, say an aye.
Aye.
And oppose them sign. Motion carries. Item three A.
Commissioner, item three A is consideration and approval to award contract for construction manager at risk, C Mar, for the McAllen International Airport Terminal Expansion Project. Mr. Santasoy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This item is brought before you as a result of the direction provided by the mayor and commission on the approach for the terminal expansion. Staff recommends approval of a award of contract for the construction manager at risk for the McAllen International Airport Terminal Expansion to Spoglass Contractors in the amount of four hundred forty eight thousand nine hundred fifty six dollars.
Commissioners, this is an important opportunity for staff to be able to engage with a contractor early in the design process in an effort to modernize and hopefully take advantage of better market pricing as we work through design on this rather than how we've traditionally approached projects through the design bid build process. And so we're we're excited to do this. The expansion at the airport, as we've discussed in several workshops, is much needed. And as in the coming weeks, Jeremy and I will be discussing with. as in the coming weeks, Jeremy and I will be discussing with the community the tremendous economic impact that the airport has, not only on McAllen, but the Rio Grande Valley as a region. This is a much-needed project, and we think that this process will get us down the road to where we need to be with the airport facility.
Thank you. So, I have a motion to approve by Mr. Castillo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rios. Everybody in favor, please, in the favor, say an aye.
Aye.
And oppose them sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
And I highly recommend for you all get to the website, because there is a good explanation of everything that we're looking at doing at the airport.
The airport?
It, it will help us not only, I mean, this is to get us through 20, 20 to 25 more years of, of operation. We're not thinking of what, what it will look like or what our needs are, you know, one to five years. We're talking one to 25 to 30 years.
Yes.
Of what our needs are. So, this is, this is, this is going to be very, very important if you can get into the website.
Right, 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 right. And remember that we almost at capacity already at our current airport, so it's a much-needed expansion and we are very fortunate to have the, the way to do it. Thank you. 3B.
Commissioners, item 3B is consideration and authorization to terminate South Texas Landscapes for Zone 3, 10, 14, 15, and re-award that contract to Rod's Lawn Care. Mr. Moline?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Tabuel. City Commissioners, this item has been brought to you today as we have had a longstanding issue with the performance from South Texas Landscaping with their grounds maintenance care. We even issued South Texas Landscape a cure notice for 30 days to see if they could rectify the issues. They have not. And so, it is considering the opportunity given to South Texas Landscapes for the awarded areas. The City of McAllen Parks and Recreation recommends terminating their contract and awarding affected items to the next bidder, who would be Rod's Lawn Care.
Questions?
Question. Did we, did we get a, did you check into other landscaping companies?
The ones, we currently have three on, on contract. As, as we went out to bid, there was only three vendors that we took aboard for this fiscal year, which was South Texas Landscape, Bright View and Rod's Lawn Care.
How long has the Rod's been with us?
Rod's has been with us several years now, and as, as we speak, they are taking care of some of the, the areas that South Texas Landscape cannot perform to date, and so we're very happy with their performance with, with us.
Yeah, I've seen them around, you know, they got all their equipment, they got good equipment.
Yes, sir.
And I think they're doing a great job, you know, cleaning our country and, and, okay.
Motion by Mr. Rios to approve. Second by Mr. Aguirre. Everybody in favor, please, in the favor, say an aye.
Aye.
And oppose them sign. Motion carries. Variance is 4A. Omar?
Okay, the property is located at 109 South 29th Street. The requested, they are requesting three variances. Variance number one is not to provide the interior right-of-way of 60 feet as required, and the applicant is proposing to do 50 feet of right-of-way with 10 feet of sidewalk and utility easements. They are working with the traffic department to do traffic studies in regards for the cross-section between 28th and 29th. Variance number two is not to provide the north-south alley. We do not have alleys on the other adjoining lots. We do have some to the south, but not, nothing that's adjoining to this particular lot. Variance number three is not to provide the additional right-of-way for South 28th. We have additional right-of-way south of Chicago, but north of Chicago, we don't have additional right-of-way, so it's just, it doesn't make sense. So, at the planning and zoning commission meeting, the board did have questions, and after discussion, the board voted recommend approval of the variances requested.
I have a motion by Mr. Rios, second by Mr. Aguirre to approve. Everybody in favor, please, in the favor, say an aye.
Aye.
And oppose them sign. Motion carries 4B.
Okay, 4B is at 4100 State Highway 107. The applicant has requested the item be tabled. They do, they had, they wanted to submit some additional items for clarification.
Okay, so, can I have a motion to table?
True.
Motion by Mr. Aguirre to table, second by Mr. Rios. Everybody in favor, please, in the favor, say an aye.
Aye.
And oppose them sign. Motion carries. Manager report.
Commissioners, item 5A is consideration authorization to remove uncollectible tax account from the delinquent tax rule. We have Becky and Kelly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners. The item before you is due to accounts that are no longer collectible. So, between my office and Kelly's office, we have determined the accounts that need to be removed. These are due to accounts that are no longer in business, bankruptcy discharges, anything that we cannot, they cannot file a lawsuit. So, in order for us to clean up our delinquent tax rules, these are pursuant to the property tax code, so they must be removed. So, Kelly can give you a little bit more information on those accounts if you'd like.
I think we're fine, right?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Castillo to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Aguirre. Everybody in favor, please, in the favor, say an aye.
Aye.
And oppose them sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Nice to see you.
See you. B.
Commissioner, item 5B, advisory board appointments. City Secretary Perlalata.
Good afternoon. This item is for advisory board appointments, and I have two nominations from Commissioner Cabeza de Vaca. He is nominating Juan E. Villarreal to the Senior Citizens Board and Omar Guevara to the Traffic Commission Board.
I have motion by Mr. Rios to accept the nominations, second by Mr. Castillo. Everybody in favor, please, in the favor, say an aye.
Aye.
And oppose them sign. Motion carries. Item number C.
Future agenda items, Commissioners. Next week, we'll have a presentation from McAllen Public Utility on water rates, but we'd be happy to program out past that, any additional items you want. We'll have an update soon. I know it'll be in October on the mural that we're working on for the downtown parking garage, so that, that's coming your way.
All right, awesome. Parking garage. Thank you so much. Item 6A is a table item, Mr. Sodelo.
Okay, the applicant is here, so this property is located at 801.
We need, we need to remove from the table first.
Sorry.
Thank you so much. I have a motion by Mr. Aguirre to remove from the table.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rios. Everybody in favor, please, in the favor, say an aye.
Aye.
And oppose them sign. Motion carries. Add him removed from the table. Go ahead, Mr. Sodelo.
Okay, so, the property is located at 801 North 23rd. The customer is requesting the variance not to provide the alley right-of-way that will help the customer as well as non-conforming duplexes along 24th Street. They will also be able to use the area, that additional alley as maneuvering for parking off the alley, and will be able to provide front-end loader trash pickup within which will accommodate for a larger bulk pickup. Right now, they're having issues, they can't use that alley for the larger bulk for the, so they use the side loaders off of that north street. However, if they were to provide the alley, then they'll do the L shape, and then they would be able to do front-end loader on that area, and as, as well as, they wouldn't have to provide the 50 feet of maneuvering onsite. They could use the alley, the L-shaped alley as a side loader or front loader, because it could come in from the north into, directly to the alley and then turn west. So, it's just, there are several possibilities, but it's just one of those that they don't want to provide it. So, originally, they, they agreed to provide it, and then, so the plat, the plat went for revised, went for final, and now it went, has gone back for revised final because they don't want to provide it.
Who, who would have to pay for that?
They would.
They as a?
They, the developer. The developer.
The developer.
Yes. So, like, right now, we do have non-conforming duplexes along the west side of, the east side of 20, on 24th Street. So, there's three duplexes that are, you would have, would use that partial alley that alley to have right now on the between 23rd and 24th, however, they don't have an out to 24th Street. So, this would provide the out for them as well as providing access for the dumpsters.
Okay, I, I drove it, okay? I, I drove it a month ago when it first came out, okay? Then it's been tabled a few times, so. Okay, non-conforming, and there's three, you're saying there's three?
Duplexes.
Duplexes, okay? There's, there's, okay, that has, that has grown through the years, okay? And so, because there's, they're non-conforming, and the alley is being basically used so that they can drive their cars in and park next to the alley or inside their, their dwellings or inside their lots, you're saying that this, this owner of this property that's facing 23rd Street, that's commercial, okay, has to, has to do this expenditure of, for an alley that is basically for the three non-conforming duplexes.
Correct. It is, it is for their benefit, but then it also benefits them as well, because they won't have to provide additional right-of-way or additional parking area for, I guess, maneuvering area. So, like, when they have the front-end loaders, they won't be able to have side-in or the front-end loaders off of 23rd or 24th. So, they'll have to go into the property for the new dumpster location for this particular building. So, they would have to provide 50 feet of maneuvering, so that'll take about 50 feet, will take up a lot of buildable area. So, if they were to do that east-west alley to connect it to the north-south alley, they'll be able to do a front-end loader going south, and then the dumpster can just go out towards the west. So, just, it benefits them as well. So, it all depends on how you look at it.
Well, it all depends what.
Yes.
We don't know what kind of, what kind of building they're going to build.
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay. I, I would imagine that.
Somebody wants to speak about it?
Everybody want to talk about it?
I'm David Guerra, 423 Nightingale Avenue, McAllen, Texas. I'd like to pass out, even though it may be up there on your side, with the side panel? No?
The first one highlights where the property is located with a red dot, that's a single page. Y'all see that? It's that vacant lot that tees into, Hagberry tees right into it. The property, that property is owned by the lady that owns the building to the north. And, and across Ivy Street, you have the McAllen Housing Authority. Now, south of the empty lot, you have Lopez tires, wheels and tires, okay? The second document I passed out is to show the, where the alley is behind that large building, and you have three casitas. They're not fourplexes, duplexes. They're not that at all. Absolutely not. There's homes that are practically falling apart. Behind that picture, I have the original plat of those homes, where those homes are on 24th Street, and the homes built behind the 24th Street homes, and then the alley, and then, you know, the, the properties that are across the alley to, to, to the, to the east. This plat was filed in 1952, you know, 70 something years ago, 74, 75 years ago, as single resident lots, not double, not lots for two houses, but for single residents. We think it's, the first time it was, the plat was approved, I wasn't involved. But then, after she started looking at costs and, and how much it's, it was going to cost her, and also how much it was going to take away from her, from her ability to sell that property, she's, the only reason she's replating is to sell the property to third parties, to a third party, whoever that may be, okay? We believe it's unjust and it's not equitable for her to have to build a, extend her lot, her, except the, the alley to the south and across to connect with 24th Street. On 24th Street, all the houses that front 24th, they put their trash cans on 24th Street. The first casita that's on the back, closest to Ivy, they put their trash can on Ivy. So, you're only talking about access to two trash cans, and I think the neighbors have told me, the ones in the front 24th Street say, they normally put their trash cans on 24th Street, not in the alley. The casitas in the back. So, for two casitas, or, and their tenants, they're not owners of the house, they want her to extend that, that driveway, then take it west. And she don't want to do that, and I, and I don't blame her. This is a very, very mature neighborhood. Now, to the south, where Lopez tires, wheels and tires was located, they built that building, you know, about nine, 20 years ago. They did not require for him to put an alley anywhere. They could have said, oh, we got an alley that someday is going to extend through that empty lot, then we should extend it right through the other lot. They didn't let him do it. They didn't have to do that. So, again, it's not just and it's not equitable. The other thing is, I think McAllen Housing Authority went through some new construction on that, on that corner lot. They weren't required to maintain an alley in between their apartments or their building. And we, you know, that's time was here, we, we had the Waste Management Transportation Section say, oh, Mrs. Acosta is parking her bins on the north side of her building, her trash bins. You know what the Housing Authority does? You go out there right now, and their trash bins are on Jasmine, next to their building, just like Mrs. Acosta has. Mrs. Acosta doesn't believe that it's to her benefit to have, to install an alley into this lot that's been empty forever. And so, we're, we're respectfully requesting that the City Commission use common sense and, and look at the equitable position of my client in relation to who nobody else was asked to, to do, what they're asking her to do.
Mr. Guerra?
And, and, excuse me, and if a big truck has to come in, if it's to pick up two little trash cans, then they can just back out. I mean, they've, they've been doing it since the houses have been there, since how long? The 60s, 70s, 80s? To me, it's more like a convenience for the, for the truck driver for two trash pickups. And that, and then we have the engineer, David here, answering technical questions. Let's see if I missed anything. The casitas, you said alleys are parking, they have gas, everybody's parked there. We don't know, we can't, they couldn't find the underground utilities on the alley? We don't even know if there's underground utilities in that alley. I know David said he tried to, the city couldn't, couldn't show evidence that there was drainage lines or anything in, or sewer lines.
There was a dick test performed, David?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say, other than I, I think it's a real simple yes.
So, David, I just want, I want to make sure that, that we're understanding. So, the L would come through the property line and then take the alley allegedly, or alleged alley, back to the west to 24th Street?
Right, it would L to the west.
So, so in effect, you'd be really forcing any commercial use of that into the subdivision?
Which subdivision?
You, you, well, the subdivision to the west.
To the, yeah.
So, you'd be forcing any?
Yeah, the trucks would be looking one across.
Coming in, into the subdivision, okay?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't have commercial trucks coming into the, on 24th Street. We'd all, I envision only an area selected to put trash cans that can be picked up, pushed, you know, pushed in, picked up on 24th Street on the backside.
Omar, Omar, does Lopez tires and wheels, or would this lot have, if this alley wasn't there, would it have access from 24th Street, or would we, would we force the traffic out to 23rd?
It would force it out to 24th. So, like, the main thing that Lopez didn't get the access, the alley north and south is because there was a building to the south of it already, so we couldn't go, we couldn't request an alley to go south. So, that's why it's, they're requesting the alley to go west.
But even the building to the south of Lopez tires, you have the building, then you have a parking lot, and then you have some more, the alley could have extended to the south location, if I remember my pictures correctly, and Lopez could have, if, they could have. And Lopez could've, if, they, they could've have an exit to 24th Street if they want. But we just want equitable treatment, that's all we're asking for, and like I said, Mrs. Acosta will.
Well, it's, it's, it's commercial property, okay? And we don't know what will, what, at the time that they will come.
For building permits.
For building permits, that's, that's when you discuss this. Not, not at the time of, of selling a business, a property.
And the reason, the reason, it's, it's currently, it's currently meets and bounds. So to sell the property.
Yeah, you're subdivided.
You want to subdivide it and give them.
Hey, I, I think that, at time, at the time that they will, that whoever buys it, whether they expand their business, or whether you have a whole new business, that's the time that you, you decide how your trash is going to be picked up and how that, but, for that's, for that little area there, of making that expense and taking away feet for an alley, and then having to build the alley, I mean, that's not equitable.
A motion to, a motion to disapprove. A motion to disapprove. I have a motion by Mr. Castillo to disapprove.
Second.
Second by Mr. Aguirre.
Omar, let's clarify what, what that means.
Well, disapprove or approve the variance? So I'm recommending disapprove of the variance.
Right.
Disapproval of the variance.
The variance request is to not require the alley, so I think the intent of Commissioner Castillo's motion is to not require the alley, and approve the request for the variance.
Correct.
Right? Yeah, that's what, that's what I understood, but.
For the record, that, that will require a supermajority based on Planning and Zoning's recommendation.
Right. So I have a motion in a second. Everybody in favor, please, if I can say an aye.
Aye.
And opposed, then sign. Motion carries.
Well, that is the supermajority.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes. So, abogado, seven?
Yes, sir. Commissioner, for items 7A through 7C, I recommend that the board entertain a motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to proceed as described in executive session.
Motion by Mr. Rios, second by Mr. Castillo. Everybody in favor, please, if I can say an aye.
Aye.
And opposed, then sign. Motion carries.
Commissioner, with regards to item 7D, a specific oral motion is required. I can read the motion, and then we'll need a roll call vote.
Roll call?
Yes, sir. The specific oral motion required by statute is, I move that the City of McAllen authorize and ratify the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the following property, being it 22,881 square foot building, more or less situated on the grounds of the McAllen International Airport, located at 2500 South Vicentino Boulevard in McAllen, Idago County, Texas. Said grounds more particularly described as the north 23.43 acres of Lot 4, less the northeast 2.44 acres, and northwest 1.8 acres, encompassing 19.19 acres net, Idago Canal Company subdivision, volume 0, page 58 map records, Idago County, Texas, for public use, improving and/or enlarging an airport.
Approved.
So it's, it's gonna be a roll call?
We need a motion in a second and then a roll call?
Yes, I have a motion by Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Rios. Everybody in favor, please, if I can say an aye, roll call?
Approved.
Approved.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. With regards to item 7E, no action is required.
No action, 7E?
Commissioner, with that, that concludes your agenda for this evening. I recommend the German.
Okay, so that concludes our agenda for this evening, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Regular city commission meetings are held on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Meetings are rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays on the McAllen Cable Network.